I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for May 1st, 2012, and invite everyone to stand as we have some special guests with us tonight to provide the invocation and lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance. This is Tim Pettit, the Administrator of Bowling Green Christian Academy, and his son, J.D., I don't know if Jackson is making it up here too, they're going to lead us in the pledge after the invocation. Mr. Pettit?
Let's pray together. Father, we are so grateful for this time that you brought us together tonight. We're thankful for this beautiful weather and for all the blessings you give us, especially those that we don't think about. Your word tells us that you give us every breath and every heartbeat. And, Lord, you have blessed us to allow us to live in this great city. And, Father, we pray that this time will be a blessing to all the residents of Bowling Green. We pray for each city council member, that they will seek out your will, and their decisions will be your decisions. We pray that you will grant them your wisdom, your discernment, and your guidance as they make decisions that will better our city. And, Father, we just pray a blessing tonight, and for this time, we pray a continued blessing over our city of protection and provision. And, Father, we pray this in the most precious name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, J.D., and, Mr. Pettit, we appreciate you being here. Good stuff.
The bowling association meeting here tonight, haven't we?
In the shower, please call the roll.
Commissioner Dunning.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Nash.
Here.
Commissioner Waltrip.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Here. So, do we have any awards and recognitions tonight?
Oh, I do not, Mayor.
From anyone on the board? Any comments, sir?
No, not tonight.
No, no close session or anything?
No, not tonight.
I hear sigh of relief from Mr. Dunning.
I think there's wrestling on, right, Joe? All right.
All right, the first item is to approve the minutes from the April 17th, 2012 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. We have time for public comments. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to step forward and comment on an item that's not on tonight's agenda, we'd invite you to do that now. Seeing no one, we'll begin with the second reading of Ordinance 2012, number nine.
Ordinance amending code of ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter 2, Administration of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordnances to revise the membership of the Greenways Commission of Bowling Green in Warren County.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Hill. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Second reading of Ordinance 2012, number 10.
Ordinance renaming street. Ordinance approving the renaming of a portion of Navajo Drive to Jefferson Court.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Second reading of Ordinance 2012, number 11.
Ordinance relating to WKU Gateway to Downtown Bowling Green Tiff Development Area. Ordinance approving amended and restated Local Participation Agreement Number 3 and amended and restated Master Development Agreement Number 2 related to the WKU Gateway to Downtown Bowling Green Development Area.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Hill. Any discussion? Mr. Lamphier.
Mayor, how are you?
I'm fine, sir.
Mayor and members of the commission, I'm here this evening as local counsel for the Downtown Redevelopment Authority. Nader Baydoun, an attorney in Nashville, is the attorney who is in particular assisting DRA with this particular project. And as you know, Mr. Baydoun sent a letter to you the other day asking that this matter be tabled to allow DRA an opportunity to study the new agreement and compare it with the old agreement. I've been in my business for a long, long time, 34 years, and typically when people change contracts, there's a reason. And so, our request to you is to allow a sufficient time just to table this matter to your next meeting to allow us to look at the new agreement in greater detail. We respectfully believe that there are some significant changes that do not serve the interests of DRA. That is our focus, but respectfully, don't serve the best interests of the city or taxpayers. And so, we would ask that you simply table the matter tonight. This has been pending since 2010. In another month, it's not going to kill the project. It could save a tremendous amount of money, a tremendous amount of money. And so...
I didn't understand that last sentence, I'm sorry.
How it would save money?
Did you tell us that we were saving money? I apologize.
No, no, no. I said if you wait and allow us to report back to you, we respectfully believe that by not executing this agreement, the new amended master development agreement, you will save a lot of money.
David, is that based on the possibility or prospects that DRA may have as far as...
No. That's based on, that's based on language in the new agreement. In the new agreement, and honestly, I know you all are much more familiar with all the documents that got on with this project than I am. Almost felt like I was looking at the President's Health Care Bill when I started trying to search through all of these documents. But under the new agreement, there is a, I wish I could tell you what page it's on, but I can't because they aren't numbered. Under paragraph four of the agreement, and that may be page five of the agreement, paragraph four is entitled Compensation of Developer for Services Provided. You see that?
Under which...
As I read this...
Under which agreement are you referring?
Pardon me?
Which agreement are you referring to? The local participation...
I'm referring to the new amended and restated Master Development Services Compensation Agreement.
I don't, I don't have a copy here with me. Is anyone...
Is there...
There are several suggestions that I would make to you that, if I may be so humble as to suggest them to you. I beg your indulgence while I make that suggestion. As I read the new, as I read the new agreement, it appears to me that the master developer's entitled $500,000 when he signs it. That'd be tomorrow. I don't know where that money comes from or whose pocket it comes out of.
I believe that money was paid when we first signed the agreement, back in 2007.
Well, respectfully, Mayor, I understand that. Respectfully, that's a $500,000 ticket item. It'd be real prudent to say which has already been paid. This agreement doesn't say that. This amended agreement does not say that. It increases the area, as you know, the development area, from 106 acres to 383 acres. The developer will automatically get credit for $35 million worth of projects, which it had absolutely no involvement in bringing to the table, and will get a 1% fee out of it. $350,000 added to the fees that it can earn, simply because the agreement says so and not because of work it had performed. And that's good work if you can get it, but that money comes from someplace. I would respectfully submit to you that there are other things that we could get into, and I'm really not prepared to address them all with you now. That's why we would like to have more time.
Is there a reason why you brought it to our attention in the meeting rather than talk with the city's attorney prior to tonight, though?
Could I have done that? Well, I'm sorry, but...
Yes, is there a reason why you waited till tonight to bring that up as opposed to go to the city attorney or city manager before this evening?
Well, I guess there's a couple of things I could say to that. It was read on first reading at your last meeting. That's when DRA first found out about it. And, you know, I guess the only thing I could say about that, about talking to the city attorney about it, you, you, this board is the policymakers. I'm not talking about legal nuances, I'm talking about policy. And this board is the one who's responsible for policy and spending money. And I would respectfully submit that I wouldn't object to talking to Mr. Harmon about it.
The reason I ask that is because the issues you bring up really don't have anything to do with DRA, and they have to do with the entire agreement that we've already voted on.
I can speak directly to DRA. But I was addressing, you asked me about saving money, and I was trying to answer your question.
True, thank you, sir.
In the, in the agreement, there was a working agreement that tracks changes. I trust that you all are all familiar with the, how you can track all of the changes that you make to agreements. There have been numerous changes made to this new agreement that deletes obligations that the master developer had under the old agreement. And specifically as it relates to DRA, it is the, it is its agreement to provide the $2 million renovation at 601 State Street. And respectfully, for the life of me, I see no reason to just let that obligation drift away like steam over a hot pot. That was an obligation that the master developer volunteered to bring to the table when all of this was put together and they haven't performed. There is no contractual excuse under this contract not to have performed, none. And when, if this new agreement is signed, what the new agreement has done, it has deleted certain language. That's why if you have a copy of the document that tracks changes, you can just look, you don't have to read what it says, you can look what it left out, what the new agreement has left out, deleted from the obligation, from the contract and the master developer's obligations. And it says that, this is a paragraph that is deleted. Failure to provide such sub-developer agreements, that was the obligation of the developer, to the reasonable satisfaction of authority shall be caused for the termination of this agreement by the authority. The authority had an out clause in the first agreement. That out clause for unsatisfactory performance is deleted in the new contract, outright deleted. The first agreement had a development schedule that listed all of the projects. It was Exhibit G to the first agreement. It listed all of the projects, the ones that the master developer was obligated under the contract, and in this exhibit to bring to the table was the DRA building, private investment of $2 million, retail space in Block 6, almost $5.7 million.
Let's limit it to the...
Pardon me?
If you're representing DRA, let's limit it to the DRA discussion there.
Well, DRA is one piece in a, is a small piece in this whole puzzle. And the bottom line is, under this exhibit, Alliance was obligated to bring $26 million in private investment, which is deleted in the new agreement. Of that $26 million is the $2 million that was designed to go to 601 State Street. Once again, and I don't want to say things that I shouldn't, I don't want to start casting aspersions, I shouldn't do that, but I would respectfully ask the Board of Commissioners to please table this until the next meeting, to look at those details. Give us an opportunity to look at those details and come back and report to you about them. The item that we are particularly, and I should say on behalf of DRA, the one that we are most especially concerned about is how the changes in this, in this agreement, excuse me, how the changes in this agreement impact DRA. That's our primary concern. I would respectfully submit to you that there's a whole lot more to it tonight.
I appreciate your comments.
But we, we ask that you table it. I would submit that it does not prejudice anyone to wait. It's been going on since 2010. And as I, respectfully, as I see it, I thought of four options that the board, this board has. Want us to do nothing and to keep the agreement that you have. I don't know what the problem is with that, but you just do nothing, keep the agreement you have. The second thing is, under this current agreement, you have the right to terminate the master developer's services. The third thing is to sign the agreement and let the master developer off of the hook for the obligations that they get off the hook for in this new agreement. And the last thing is to simply table it and please allow us sufficient time to look at it and study it, and perhaps for you. There may be, there may be specific questions that you have as a board about it. We'd be happy to try to look at those things and answer, and answer. We're not trying to start a huge disagreement here, but we have specific interests that we feel we need to protect, and we're prepared to protect them. That's why we're here asking for additional time to look at this new contract.
But with regard to the entire document, I think we've considered much of what you've brought up here today with regard specifically to DRA. I think we discussed that last time, and, Mr. Harmon, I think you had some comments with regard to the language changes specifically for DRA. Would you mind repeating them if you can recall?
Well, I'm not sure if I can recall, I said it may be better to have Mr. Brooks address that issue. They're the ones who drafted changes. And I don't want to speak for Kevin, but I think it's their position that these changes that they're proposing tonight, I think in their view and mine, pretty well mirror what was always their intent. And their intent was that they intended to make improvements to DRA, or DRA building, if they had finances in place, including incremental bonds. But because of the financial situation, they've never been able to issue incremental bonds, and there's simply no money to make the changes to DRA building. And I think what Smith Express does is the changes they propose tonight, I think basically in language is, subject to the authority's ability to fund tenant improvements, pretty much, I think if you ask them, mirrors what has actually occurred, that there's never simply been money to make that, those improvements to the DRA building. And I'm sure Kevin is, not to put Kevin on the spot, but I'll let him, since he represents the authority, and I think, you know, I guess the main conduit between us and the master developer is the authority.
Is there any comments or questions from the board?
I'd love for Mr. Brooks to come to the mic. Mr. President, Mayor.
One question, Mr. Lamphier.
Hang on just a second.
Given your position that the DRA didn't know about this agreement until two weeks ago, what work has been done in the last 14 days by Mr. Baydoun or yourself or DRA to decipher this and be prepared for tonight's city commission meeting?
Well, I guess there are a couple of things I would say to them. They had to make, well, DRA made arrangements to meet with Mr. Baydoun. And I believe that that was last Thursday or Friday. Yes. He has a trial, he had a trial today, that's why he couldn't be here tonight. I had one last week, and I've got another next week. So, an effort was made to do as much as we could do. That's why we ask for, that's why we ask for, you know, just wait till the next meeting. Respectfully, I don't think that that's an unreasonable request, perhaps the board does. But we've done the best that we can under the circumstances. And the agreement, well, the agreement is not a simple, it's not a simple agreement. I trust that all five of you would agree with that. And I don't think it's a very simple agreement. I bet Mr. Harmon doesn't think it's a simple agreement. I know Mr. Brooks doesn't think it's a simple agreement. No lawyer that picked it up and weighed it would think it's a simple agreement. There's a great deal of volume to it, there's a long history to it, and it cannot be examined in a vacuum. It has to be compared with the first agreement. And so, and I don't know, Commissioner, if that answers...
So, I just, I want to make sure that I'm asking the right question. So, I'm going to, I'm going to propose a statement, and you tell me if I'm right or wrong.
Okay.
Two Tuesdays ago, two weeks ago, DRA got the first opportunity. Mr. Murphy, who's sitting right there, got his first opportunity to see this restated and amended master developer agreement. And the following day, he contacted Mr. Baydoun, and Mr. Baydoun told him he could not meet until two Thursdays after that.
Okay.
Is that an accurate statement?
I don't know. I wasn't part of those conversations. I don't know, quite honestly.
Sure, stand up, please.
I would say it's not surprising to me for a busy lawyer.
Swear me in or...
Ron Murphy from DRA, go ahead.
Ron Murphy with DRA. Mr. Nash, we contacted Mr. Baydoun, and he was tied up in a trial. I could not get to Nashville because I was locating two new businesses in our office, two new residential's, and, not residential's, but retail businesses in our office. Also, I was working with another client that is interested in the entire building. I could not get out of Bowling Green, I was completely tied up. And he proceeded with his, with his trial preparations. So, it was very difficult for me to get the personal time to go talk to the attorney. That's as simple as I know to tell you. And I did not know what all this was about until the meeting that I attended. And I intended to say something at the, at the regular meeting when the subject was brought up after the work session, but the vote went through just like that. I didn't have a chance.
Oh, now, wait a second.
I don't...
Respectfully, I'm going to use Mr. Lamphier's language, respectfully, to suggest that you somehow did not have an opportunity to speak before this commission is disingenuous.
Well...
This commission is as open and transparent as they come when it comes to these very meetings. Nothing is rushed through. To suggest that Mr. Murphy is a problem for me.
Mr. Nash, respectfully, I would say then it's my fault. But we're here tonight to ask you to table the situation until we've had an ample time to look at it and to study it. That's all we're asking. We're not asking to scrap it, to hold it up, to do anything. We just need our opportunity to look at it. The DRA is very concerned about this. We can get into a lot of detail about this, but now's not the time to do it. And I respectfully ask you that you would table it, to simply do it. That's all. Thank you.
Do you have any more questions?
Not this time.
Okay, your question, Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, please. Mr. Brooks, I'm sorry.
Me. Yes, sir.
Mr. Brooks, of course, we've got several attorneys here in the building tonight. This 601 State Street, I think, has been a problem or misunderstanding or a lack of understanding from day one. Will you bring us up to date as to the relationship between the master developer, Chapter 58, and the DRA organization? And I think Mr. Lamphier is right in one of the comments that he makes. It appears, and I've said this before, that the master developer, I think, in the earlier stages, had said certain things, well, written certain things on documents pertaining to DRA. So, please just, I know I said a lot and probably didn't say nothing, but it cleared my mind.
There is no relationship really between my client, the authority, and DRA. I guess I would say this. This is a long and complicated document, but if you look at the strike-throughs that Mr. Lamphier was talking about, and you look for the provisions relating to DRA, it's about three sentences. It's not that complicated. There's a lot of stuff in here. We have heard, and frankly, with respect, most of what we heard have been complaints about the master developer, which, you know, sort of, I don't see the relationship between that and these little edits we did for DRA. My client has never, I don't want to say that I have, I can say exactly what the official position of the authority is on this, because I didn't really come here feeling like I would need to be defending the master developer, but I've not heard anybody on my board express dissatisfaction with the master developer. So, the changes, and so the changes that are in this agreement relating to DRA are, in our view, to make it even clearer what we thought was already clear. And that is that the master developer's obligation to rent that building were predicated upon $2 million being found to renovate that building, and that didn't happen. And we don't, I don't believe, as somebody who's worked on redrafting that document, that we've changed that. I don't think we've changed that obligation at all. It reminds you that DRA is not a party to this agreement. They're not a party to this agreement. And in fact, it has a very clear, it's a lawyer thing, but they're not a beneficiary to this agreement. I am not aware of any party to this agreement ever suggesting that these revisions would somehow result in changing the way the master developer is compensated. I don't think that, my board doesn't think that, I don't think the master developer thinks that. I think all we're doing is memorializing the facts as they already were. So, I don't know if I helped much, Joe, but I tried.
Well, I just, in the earlier stages, I just remember monies supposedly are supposed to have been dedicated to 601 State Street. And maybe that's why I'm getting confused. It looks the same as it did some time back, and there hasn't been any changes to the facility.
Mr. Dunning, we don't have $2 million. Find us, get us a loan. I mean, that's, the whole thing was predicated on borrowing the money, and the authority doesn't have, has literally almost no money.
That's all I have, Mayor.
I have a question. It has to do with what...
For me?
I'm not sure.
I just wanted to say something back with your commission.
No, I can ask mine after you do yours, David.
Come right ahead.
Yeah. You wanted to ask me?
Go ahead with your statement.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to, I wanted to say a couple of things. You know, when you get two lawyers in a room, you're bound to have a disagreement. And I respectfully disagree with Mr. Brooks about a couple of things. He said that this agreement doesn't change the way the master developer is compensated. I agree. But it changes the amount that the master developer will receive dramatically. It expands the area from 106 acres to 383 acres. And it includes fees over projects which it had absolutely nothing to do. It changes a lot for the master developer. But that's not, that's not the reason I'm up here. I'm gonna talk specifically about this project. Under the first agreement, the master developer was obligated to bring private development to $2 million worth. That's, that's not a small amount of money. $2 million worth of private development to 601 State Street. And under the new agreement, the one with that responsibility is the authority. Where's that money come from? Where does that money come from? Is that taxpayers? Where's that $2 million? What could it have been, what could have been done with that $2 million if it didn't come out of bonds issued by the authority? And the repayments that have to go back into it. Instead, the master developer is the one who should have been spending that money or come up with it someplace. The first agreement obligated them to do it and their deadline is long past. Now, quite frankly, I don't understand why there's a need to change that. You do a new agreement? Why do you even change that obligation? What is the, what's the factual basis for letting them out of that obligation? You may sign the new agreement to do something else, but why do you change that obligation? I don't know. Aside from that, Mr. Brooks said that the purpose of these changes is to make clear, I wrote it down, make clear what they already thought was clear. I wonder how much money's been spent on legal fees. And if we're still having to go back over these documents to make things clear, that just doesn't make any sense to me. Contract is capable of being read and capable of being interpreted. And when it changes words typically in contracts, when you change words, you change obligations. Words mean something in contracts. And when you change words, when you change terms, you're changing something for somebody. Now, that does not mean that we would come back here in a month, as Mr. Murphy has said, to come in here and start trying to complain or stop or things of that nature. That's, that's not what we're asking you to allow us to do. We're asking you to allow us sufficient time to simply review, to look at it and review. And we'll come back and we'll tell you what we found and how we believe that this affects us. That is what we ask of you. You've been very, very patient listening to me and I thank you for that. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Did you have a question?
The first state, the first statement that the 106 acres versus the 383 acres and the master developer getting $350,000 tomorrow. Can you explain that?
And I wouldn't say to you that they'd get it tomorrow, but.
Oh, well, just whenever the.
Here's, under the paragraph that I referenced you to, one, one paragraph.
Where are you?
He's in a compensation agreement, not in a master developer.
Is compensation of developer for services provided. And it says that it is to be based on the capital investment. And capital investment's a very technical legal term that's defined in this agreement by adopting a definition that is found in the statute. And that statute essentially, if I can reduce it down to four or five common everyday words, it includes absolutely everything you could spend on a project, from land acquisition, even recording fees. Whatever you spend on a project, that's gonna be part of the definition of capital investment. And an exhibit to the new amended agreement is a schedule called Capital Investment Schedule. And it lists all of the projects. The completed development amounts to 126.5 million. All of those are public projects, all of them. Master developer didn't bring them. There are other projects that are under construction.
If I can, if I can interrupt you at this point, Mr. Lamphier. That was a decision that the entire commission made in 2008 to expand the area in anticipation of that expansion. His compensation would include the additional area.
And that's a policy decision this board makes on how much to pay the master developer. That's, that's a policy decision. But it is not part of the first agreement. You are adding it to this agreement. Work that Western is doing, like Western needs a master developer.
Excuse me, there are several agreements that have been gone along the way that we have worked to try to make that language coincide in each of them. And the board, when they made that decision in 2008, anticipated that when the TIF area was expanded, that his compensation would include projects within that area. Nothing is changing tonight with regard to that expectation or that obligation.
Mayor, I can't, I can't personally speak to that. I don't know. I'm the mayor and I know, and I respect that.
I just don't know what the implication is, is that we're suddenly gonna provide money to the developer on projects that had already passed. We acknowledged his expansion into that territory to be responsible for those projects, to make the guidelines within the TIF area. But now, that's the language that I anticipated in the agreements that we're talking about tonight. Don't obligate the city to do anything additional that we had not agreed to in previous years, but we're clarifying and cleaning up language. But getting back again to the, your question was about that, but that's.
And I'm still somewhat confused. Is, is what Bruce just said, is that accurate? And I'm not saying that you're ever wrong there, Bruce, but.
Well, everybody needs to recall, when we first did these back in 2008, we had the original TIF district, which is about 106 acres. That's the original TIF district, basically from, what is it, 8th Street up to Western, somewhere in that neighborhood. Once that was done, we did a localization agreement, we did a master developer agreement, we did a compensation agreement. Everything was based upon the TIF district being 106 acres. Subsequent to that, a couple of things happened. The state reduced the requirements to be a signature TIF from 200 million to 150 million. And the city, I guess in conjunction with the authority, I guess, working with the state as well, changed, went to state, got approval through the state, through the grant agreement, got approval from the city commission and against fiscal court and everybody else. Well, we expanded the TIF district from 106 acres to 300 acres, basically picking up from 8th Street or 8th Avenue down to the river, picking up the medical center in Gravesville and all that. Unfortunately, maybe that was a term, you know, we probably should have amended the master agreement back in 2008, 2009 if that happened. But whatever reason, it didn't happen. But I think I would agree with the mayor. I think, at least in my opinion, I think it was always understood by all the parties, and I'll let Mr. Brooks speak as well. I'm sure it was understood by the authority and by the master commissioner and everybody else that once we expanded to 300 acres, then the master developer is gonna be the master developer for all 300 acres. And I, of course, we have not worked day, you know, on a daily basis with the master developer, the authority, the one, to see what's done. I couldn't begin to sit here and tell you what the authority has done in the expanded district since 2008. I have no clue. But I think it's, it was clearly understood at the time, probably more an issue of media technicality than anything else, that the compensation agreement and the master developer agreement wasn't amended at that time to expand the district from 100 acres to 300 acres. It should have been, just never was gotten around to. But again, repeating myself, I think everybody understood, at least I understood. I think the board of commissioners understood, the authority understood, I think the master developer understood, that they were now the master developer for the entire TIF district, including the entire 300 acres. Does that answer your question?
I think it does, yeah. Mr. Brooks, you agree with that, what he said? So, so if that was done by all parties agreeing, at least verbally, but it was never changed contractually, is what you're saying?
Yes.
So, in effect?
Of course, never changed contractually in writing. It was never changed contractually in writing. I'm not too sure. You still couldn't have some kind of a meeting of the minds or a quantum merits? I don't know what work they've done. There still may be some claims that they may have. They did work expect on expectation, but.
I have a hard time believing that a court would enforce a multi-multi-million dollar contract that's not in writing. That violates statute of frauds. The contract, contracts means, if there were an intention to do the thing, and there may very well have been, honestly, if there were an intention to do some of the things that have been described, the prudent businessman would have said, "You put it in there. I don't wanna get started on this project and then you change master developers on me." That's probably not a surprising suggestion. But regardless of that.
Well, but before we leave, before we leave it, and again, I'm not, Mr. Brooks, would you just respond to that, if you don't mind? That way, we'll have three lawyers in here and I'll be confused three times instead of just two.
Nobody who is a party to this contract has any doubt whatsoever about what it means. I think it's as simple as that. And I agree with what Mr. Harmon said.
What, Mayor?
Sir? Can I bring one thing up real quick? Everybody needs to recall, I think it was November, December 2010. I think this came before the city commission at one time proposing amendment to this that would have expanded the district. And it got, I think it got pulled for other reasons, I understood, but, but at least that, you know.
It did get pulled for other reasons, but you stated it correctly earlier. And Mr. Lamphier, bless his heart, he wouldn't have any way of knowing there's so many agreements. But this agreement does not expand the TIF district. We did that a long time ago. This disagreement just catches up with the fact that we did that a long time ago.
Sorry, Commissioner, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Mayor? Let me ask this. I know everything that comes before us, it's always in need for it to happen right now or early in the morning. What would be wrong legally or otherwise if we did table this particular ordinance to provide all those involved the opportunity to review the two documents and we go from there?
I don't think there'd be any problem with doing that, other than we'll be talking about it next week with the same issue being addressed. But they didn't get $2 million and the authority doesn't have the money to give to them.
Hopefully, we could speak about it more intelligently, Mayor. That's, that's what we want to be able to do, is discuss it more intelligently with you.
Wonder, I'm sorry, go ahead and say it.
Well, kind of going along with Commissioner Denny, what did you hope to accomplish within two weeks, Mr. Lamphier?
Well, we asked that it be, that it be tabled until the June 5th meeting. That's, I think that's what Mr. Baydoun said in his letter.
So, that's more than two weeks?
The June 5th, I believe, excuse me. Let me make sure that I'm right about that. That would give us adequate time to look through it. And then, we could answer and satisfy ourselves with the questions that concern our client. DRA is not a party to this contract. Neither, neither was retail space, office space, restaurant space, residential, parking garage, land, land infrastructure. They weren't parties to this contract. But they were representations that were made in the contract to which the master developer is currently obligated, to which the city is a party. And those obligations were created in that contract on purpose, for a reason. The development of that, of the 601 State Street is gonna, will be good for this community. Nobody disagrees with that.
I don't think anybody disputes that.
And.
Where do you expect the $2 million to come from?
That's not a question that DRA answers, Your Honor. That's a question that your master developer answers. The master developer is the one who signed its name to the contract that said that it would bring $2 million in private development to the table.
What happens if they could not obtain the financing for it?
Then, they are very, very astute businessmen and they would have something in this contract to let them out of that. But it's not. If they get out of it, it'll be by the grace of the parties to the contract, including this board.
So, the two, the month-long extension, in my mind, Joe, would be that they end up at the same issue?
We may be. There are, there are other provisions in the new contract that may, there may, let me rephrase it. There may be provisions in the new contract that will allay the concerns and the fears of DRA. But we don't know. What I do know is that I can look at the, at the, at the current, at the new agreement and see that important provisions that relate to DRA have been deleted. And you're the ones that we appeal to. This board is the ones that we appeal to, to delay it.
Have you been to the Chapter 58 group to make that request?
We have not.
Yeah, I think they're the ones that are actually responsible for the master developer.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Joe, do you have a question? Sorry.
Mayor, let me, shit, I don't got what I was gonna say. Mr. Baydoun?
Yes, sir.
He was here years ago arguing issues pertaining to certain areas of the TIF district as you are speaking tonight. My question, I guess, that I remember now is, what is Mr. Baydoun gonna bring to the table that you are not already bringing to the table now, I guess?
I hope an intelligent interpretation and review of the contract. I haven't had an adequate time to do that. And that's what he plans to do.
When did you come on board, Mr. Lamphier?
When I was. Yes, Mr. Baydoun called me, I can tell you. I spoke to him on April 26th. What was that, Thursday? I honestly, I can't remember.
I don't, last week.
And last week was a very busy week for me. The 20, 26th was Thursday.
Thursday.
I spoke to him on, on Thursday. He told me that he was involved in trial today and could not be here and asked me to be here.
What concerns me about this, obviously, this is important to DRA. You all have had two weeks to deal with this. It's the same amount of time I've had also. I've had to take time out of my schedule to meet when I could have done other things for my other job. It concerns me that you all did not have an attorney that was willing to devote the time to this before tonight. Mr. Lamphier, thank you for representing them on this short notice. But why didn't you all get someone that would have given you the time before last Thursday? But why didn't you all get someone that would have given you the time before last Thursday? It seems like it wasn't that important to you all.
Mr. Murphy?
Well, first of all, Commissioner, I can't believe you would think that it's not that important to us. It is. And I can tell you that we, we were in contact with Mr. Badun and that he told us that he had a problem being here two weeks. I had to get all this together. I had no prior knowledge of any of this. Maybe you did, I didn't. I would hope you'd had some prior knowledge of it, digesting all of this within the same amount of time that I had to digest it. I'm one person. We have one staff member, that's me. I do it all, even down to the janitor business. So I'm a little bit more busy than you might think. I have, like I said, I've been working to get some clients in our building, two new businesses. And I've also been working with another group for, I just signed an option today for nine months, I'm sorry, for three months on, on the building to give them an opportunity to go through it and see what it's gonna cost them and see if they can financially afford to do it. I'm definitely afraid that they can't because of the enormous expense that's involved on the building that was left at our charge unfinished. I've been there about seven months. I think I've accomplished a great deal in seven months. I'm not asking for anything out of this world. I have even petitioned Mr. DeFabo to allow us to continue to manage the parks. And he told me that you all were not gonna agree to that. And I didn't ask for any money. I said, "We'll do it for free" because it pertains to everything that we do and programs that we have with DRA, so we can do the scheduling. I don't know what the problem with that is. Where did, where did we mess up? Why won't you let us have the management of the parks? We did it before. We did it for several years. And, you know, it's beyond me why we keep getting pushed back. This is just another thing to break DRA. Because if we fail, this property returns to the city.
I don't, I don't think that, I don't think Dean says that.
Well, I can tell you it does.
I don't think so. I think that's five years ago.
If we cease to be an organization...
Within five years?
No.
We'll look to language tomorrow and see.
Well, that's not the way I read it.
Mr. Murphy, we're not interested in the building. And regardless of what somebody may tell you, there's nobody up here that's interested in the building whatsoever.
Why is the city...
We gave you the building in order for you to have income to generate...
That's exactly right.
To take care of, to take care of yourself.
Did you know that we didn't have a sewer in that building until about three, four weeks ago?
I don't mean to be rude, but I don't know that once we gave it to you, is it, is it our responsibility to hook you up the sewer?
Well, we already had it. But the, but the city cut the sewer line in the back of the building and we had a, before I ever got there.
The city or BGMU?
The city. The city's contractor. The city provided the as-built plans to the contractor to put in a storm sewer line behind our building. And when they put that in, it was not marked. There was no marking there for our sewer line.
So you're saying that your sanitary sewer was cut by a contractor that the city had put in for, for storm water? Then that, then that contractor is responsible to hook you back up?
He, he ran into all kind of, of...
Yes, sir, he has to make it whole.
Utilities that were abandoned. And it wasn't marked on the plan, it wasn't, it wasn't flagged.
Regardless of whether it's marked, he's responsible to hook you back up the sewer.
Be that as it may, how are you, how are you gonna lease a building or rent a building without a sewer in it? And it took me five months to figure out what the heck the problem was. I had no help from anybody else. I've been told the city's not gonna help us. So what I'm saying tonight, we have a contract. There is a contract. And I would like that contract honored or give us the opportunity to look at this document and to find out if it is or it isn't. And I'll be the first one to come up here and apologize to you if I'm wrong. I'll do it publicly.
Is or isn't what?
If we don't, if we don't have a contract. If this, we, we want a chance to look at this. I don't know what the big rush is. I really, I, I just can't understand it. But I'm not in your position, I'm in my position.
I don't, I don't think I follow what you mean the contract is or isn't. I don't, I don't know what that means. I apologize, I understand.
The wording in the master development agreement as it is now and what it states as far as its obligation to the DRA. Now, Mr. Brooks said there's no money for the bonds. I believe it. So where's the money coming from? You asked that question. But when this was, when this agreement was executed, there was money then. And, and money has been, has, they've found money for every project that's been done since then. And there's still the market for the bonds.
I think you may be misinterpreting there was money then. No Tiff bond was ever sold. And I was present at the beginning and it was always anticipated that we would sell Tiff bonds.
When were the Tiff bonds sold?
There was no Tiff bonds ever sold. That's what I'm saying.
Well, then, what was the need for the, for the $2 million in there? I mean, where was the money coming from?
It was going to be from Tiff bonds that were sold. There were no Tiff bonds sold because the economy tanked. If you can't sell the bond to finance, it's like buying a house contingent on financing. If you can't get finance, you can't buy the house.
Well, all I know is that the city cut our funding for no reason at all. They took away the management of the parks so that, so that we could not make any money, so we wouldn't have any money.
Do you think that was the purpose in that?
Well, I've got some evidence that says that.
My sir, thank you much for your time, I appreciate it. Anybody else have any complimentary questions?
Joe, are you gonna...
Your Honor, if I'm in order, for purposes of a new attorney and some of the things that have been said here tonight, I will vote to table.
You'll have to move to table if you want to start that process?
Sir?
You'll have to move to table if you want to start that process?
I move to table.
And I need a second, if there's a second for that. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to table the Second Reading Ordinance 2012 Number 11. The motion is by Denny and the second is by Waltrip. I don't believe we have an opportunity to discuss on a matter of table, is that correct?
That's correct.
So we move directly to the vote? Please call the roll.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
No.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. And it will be tabled until the June 5th meeting, is that correct?
Yes, sir, whatever that means.
Is that what you're intending to say in your motion?
They've said two different dates.
So which date is it?
No, the letter clearly says June 5th.
The letter says, okay, he'd asked for two weeks, weeks. Is that what you want?
Rest on it, man.
Is that agreeable to everybody?
Kevin, is that date gonna...
I have it right here.
Is that gonna cause a problem with the rap approvals and stuff?
It could. Because I think we need this agreement as a predicate to the agreement we discussed in our working session. I don't think we cares that much about their issues lasting for another month. But I wonder if you could table it until the next City Commission meeting? You can table it again, but that would give us an opportunity to see if we're okay on the documents we need to go forward on. We, we don't, we don't need to hold up Block 6 development for another month.
Is that all right, Mr. Lampier, that'll work for you?
You've been very kind and we'll do our very best. I, I don't know about Mr. Badun's, I don't know about Mr. Badun's availability.
So can we clarify on our end, for, for the commission, for the city's standpoint, when the date's going to be?
That's what we're...
That's a decision that, that these five people up here can make. And then whatever that date is, that's the date that everybody's going to comply with. So I guess we, we voted and we voted on something that doesn't have clear guidelines.
Yeah, we did not technically mention the date in here, so...
So now let's, let's...
Want to go to the next meeting?
Let's, let's clarify.
Put all the pressure on me.
Well, let's just clarify.
Go to the next meeting, we can table it again if we don't work it out by then.
The next session of the City Commission of Bowling Green, which will be...
May 15th.
May the 15th. Are we all in agreement?
If everybody on board, understand what it is.
I'm still, I'm still no.
May, May 15th. We want to make sure that the record reflects that it's May 15th. Everybody understands what we're doing. If y'all were to go downstairs and get it worked out before the meeting's over, we'll take care of it tonight.
Right, we'll add it to it. We'll add it to the end.
Thank you very much.
All right, sir. All right, next item is Municipal Order 2012 Number 62.
Municipal Order approving the appointment of Tom Hart to the University District Review Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Denny, second by Hill, any discussion?
Good choice, Your Honor.
Thanks, sir. Looking forward to him serving. Please call the roll.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2012 Number 63.
Municipal Order approving the appointment of Jason Smith to the Bowling Green Warren County Historic Preservation Board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2012 Number 64.
Municipal Order revising the term of expiration dates of board appointees of the Bowling Green Area Convention and Visitors Bureau.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill and second by Waltrip. Ms. Fitch, would you like to briefly explain real quick what you're doing there?
I'd be glad to. We just needed a little housekeeping. Our policies and procedures describe the officer terms to end June 30th to coincide with our fiscal year. For some odd reason, there were, it turned out to be, I think, three or four different expiration dates of ending terms for our commissioners. So we just asked that they be cleaned up and be aligned with our fiscal year, which will make it a lot easier. That way, when an officer is in the midst of his term, he doesn't lose his office and his seat on our commission, so...
Thank you.
Any questions?
So moved, Your Honor. Vicki's always causing trouble, but I'll, I'll vote for her.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2012 Number 65.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2012-33 for Parker Bennett Community Center Roof Replacement Project from CMS Roofing LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount of $59,879.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill and second by Waltrip, Mr. DeFabo.
A number of months ago, we presented plans for the commission to use some reserved CBG money to make some needed improvements to Pettigo Park as well as to the Parker Bennett Community Center. One of those needed improvements was a new roof at the Parker Bennett Center. We went out to bid, we had five bidders. And tonight, we're asking you to approve the lowest bidder CMS Roofing of Bowling Green.
Mr. Fitch and Denny?
Your Honor, a couple of questions and I probably need to ask Mr. Gubis a couple of questions. I think he's right in the back there. Somebody help, help him up, please.
Yes, sir.
Ernie, the Parker Bennett Center, of course, has been there for many, many years. Used to have a swimming pool there and we had problems. And I was on the old Moll City Agency back in the mid-'70s with that project. Can you provide us numbers or, I guess, what time does the center open in the afternoon?
Okay, still, staff rotates. We, they're in the mornings, or Coomer Little helping with that. But they open at, I believe, 2:00. And this coming budget, we're gonna do a before-school drop-off, like from 7:00 to whenever the bus shows up, too.
Okay, so during the summer months, you're pretty well...
Oh, summer months, it's a...
All day?
Yes, sir, it starts like 7:30 drop-off. And I believe they pick the last child up around 5:30. It's a late drop-off.
Could you provide, and it does not have to be any rush, some numbers pertaining to the participation at Parker Bennett?
Okay, I know, staff meetings, we're talking about daily participations, around 75 in the after-school, that's every afternoon.
And how many staff people do we have there?
Two full-time and two part-time.
Every day, on a daily basis?
Yeah, part-time will vary, but usually three are there anyway.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Our mayor has left the building.
Had all of your take.
He had to make a run pretty quick. Are there any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
I'm getting used to it now, but...
Next is Municipal Order Number 2, 2012-66.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2012-32 for Sloan Convention Center Sound System Improvement Project from AAA Systems of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount not to exceed $53,700.
So moved.
So moved. Motion by Hill, second by Denny.
At your 3:00 Convention Center meeting, it's my understanding that you approved this project which essentially seeks to repair and improve the sound system at the convention center. Michael asked you to, for the authority, to spend up to $53,700 to put in new speakers and some new wiring. And the reason it's, it's not to exceed is because the nature of the work will take exploration to see how many of the actual speakers are broken and what wiring needs replaced. So it's my understanding that you all approved that.
Mr. Denny?
Yes, Your Honor. I was just wondering if it's possible with these individuals who are experts in the sound system, if we could ask them to drop by here and look at our sound system?
It's called hearing age, Joe.
I'm not laughing at you, Joe.
I just thought I'd bring it up again. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2012-67.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2012-23 for fiscal year 2012 curb and gutter rehabilitation from J.C. Brewer Construction Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount of $96,134.92.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill and second by Nash, Mr. DeFabo.
Every year, the city attempts to allocate X amount of money to the repair of a curb and gutter within the city. We prioritize that need. This bid seeks to install 600 feet of replacement curb and gutter on 11th Avenue from Kenton to the bypass. We had seven bidders and Brewer was the lowest responsible bidder. Jeff or Melissa are here, if you have any questions?
Any discussion? Please call the roll. Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2012-68.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2012-36 for fiscal year 2012 street overlay from Scotty's Contracting and Stone of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $850,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip, Mr. DeFabo.
One of the great things we do in the community is try to maintain the quality of our street services. We use electric, I mean, fueled money passed out from the state to us to fund this program. We went out to bid to do our usual program of work, and we only had one bidder, and the bidder was over the amount of money we had allocated. So we're here to recommend you accept the bid, because we have no other, and we'll have to defer the other projects on the list. As you know, the commission knows we're in the process of working on our budget, and we're going, we'll be looking at this, the roads that have been omitted, and see if we can try to help with that in the coming budget. But right now, we only have enough money to do $850,000 worth of work.
Regrettably. If we don't, then those move to the top of the list for next time?
Yes.
Is that correct, Jeff?
Yes.
Thumbs up.
But we're going to see if we can try to find some money. I can't guarantee that, though. I don't know.
Questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2012-69.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2012-16 for Audubon Drive Drainage Improvements from Landfair Construction Company of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $181,902.50, and further authorizing the direct purchase of materials from Stray Fire Pump and Supply Incorporated in the amount of $22,500.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Denning and second by Waltrip, Mr. DeFabo.
As the commission knows, we make a priority of stormwater. Sometime that stormwater requires us to use active pumping to affect the repairs and improvements needed. We went out to bid to do drainage along Audubon. We received three bids, and because of the cost of the work, we decided to bifurcate the bid, accepting the labor from Landfair Construction Company, and direct purchase from Stray Fire Company for the pump. Jeff, do you want to add anything to that? You don't have to.
It's okay. This project over in Audubon, this is one of the first drainage projects I dealt with when I came to the city some 20-something years ago. So, again, this project is to pump, and we're having to go up and over a hill to get rid of the water. And as we do quite often on projects, we're looking to do a direct purchase and do save sales tax on that purchase.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2012, number 70.
Municipal order authorizing the continuation of a contract with Mountjoy Chilton Medley PLC to provide external audit services for an additional year.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill and second by Waltrip, Mr. DeFabo.
This is a recommendation from the Internal Audit Committee through Deborah Jenkins, the internal auditor, requesting your approval to extend to Mountjoy Chilton and Medley another year of external contracting services at an agreed-upon price of $78,400 for the fourth year. Deborah's here, if you have any questions about this arrangement.
Any questions? Is there, if I may, is there any benefit to having a different auditor on occasion? I know we've only used, this would be the fourth, so we'd use them three years.
Well, we took this out to bid. That's one of the main objectives that, and the responsibilities that the audit committee has, is that every five years, this is taken out for a new audit, or, I'm sorry, for a new RFP in a bid process. So what we do is we'll evaluate those, but we did also ask, because one of the good things to have is a rotation, even if you maintain the same firm, we requested that they rotate the staff. So after five years, the partner had to rotate off and got a new partner, and then we got a new onsite manager. That helps to keep any agency from becoming complacent or from thinking that they're so familiar with us that they may not catch or see different things, and it gives a fresh set of eyes. So this would be the fourth year on the contract, where we could do one more year for our fifth year for the fiscal year '13, and at that point, the audit committee, through me, will issue out another RFP and send it out to bids to see which firm we would choose to go with at that point.
And I see, if I'm reading this document in front of me, which is bid number 2009-17, it dictates the amount of money that we're going to spend in each of the years going forward?
Yes. When they put in their proposal, we asked them to put out that we had the option to renew for up to five years, but at that time, four years ago, they had to tell us exactly what they would charge us for each one of those years. And it basically gives a couple thousand each year for an inflation for the different services. Usually, the first year will be a little more due to the fact they have to learn a lot of the processes, and then it might dip down and go up just a bit each year. But it locks them into that price for five years, so they can't try to alter that on us unless we change the scope.
It's interesting. I would have assumed it would have been more money in year one than it would have been in year five, but it actually goes up in increments of $2,000 every year. Most amount of respect for what you do and what the audit committee does. I trust you and the audit committee, but I hope that we will continue to evaluate at the end of five years. I was glad to hear that we're on a rotation, I just didn't remember that. And I would strongly suggest that not just a different partner within the firm, but that we use a different company, and that way, we, and I understand it's a bid process, and we'll go with the lowest bidder, but I believe the advantage to that is that you really don't have anybody with a vested interest. And that is, even with a different partner, and this is no reflection on Mountjoy, I don't mean that, but in general, you don't have people trying to protect the mistakes that other people have made in the past by using the same firm. And I think that the city has gone through some significant financial difficulties at the hands of people who wanted to do harm to the citizens, and I want to ensure that if this process is exactly what it's intended to do, and that is to ensure that that doesn't happen again, that we stay as fresh on top of it as we possibly can.
Yes, and that's why we do bid this out, and that's why it goes out to open bid. And I believe we submitted it to probably 20, 20 to 30 different companies the last time, and I believe, it's been a few years, if memory serves me right, I think we may have had three respondents. And getting time away from all that happened back in 2005 will open up and have more companies to try to come and bid on that, because we're kind of getting away from that time period. So that should help each time that we send that bid back out again, so...
Thank you. Thank you for the work you do.
When you say lowest bidder, this would be an evaluated-type bid, because it's professional service, and would warn you about just taking the lowest bid. You have to have some expertise, and we like them to get in there and get done, too. We're under a deadline, so...
Poor wording on my part.
No, I don't, I just want to make sure that's clear.
Well, no, I want to make sure that I'm correct in what I'm saying, too, and I understand that it's an evaluated bid, but what I'm suggesting is that using the same person over and over again can lead to mistakes, and using even the same firm with a different person over and over again can lead to mistakes, can lead to complacency. And so all I was suggesting is that when we go out for bid, that we ensure that we're getting the very best set of eyes and ears that we have to look over, factoring in those things, like how quickly do they come in and out?
Right, and we will do that, but I don't want to get it to the point, or I'd prefer not to exclude a party just because we've had them before. So that's why we do go and take it out, and to find out who's the best at that time. Some of the larger firms, if you go with some of the, you know, the big four, some of the large ones, there are so many people that work for that organization that it could be 100 of them out of voice. So it just really depends on the scope, but we want to make sure that they've got enough expertise in governmental auditing, because if they're specializing in manufacturing or some other area, that wouldn't be someone that would really be keying in and wanting to work and perform the CAFRA audit for us, so... But yes, it will go out to bid.
And Deborah and Jeff can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think I am, but it's four years ago, my memory's not that great, but if I'm not mistaken, I don't think this was a low bid four years ago. I think there's another company beat them.
No.
But we could not reach contract, because they wanted to limit their liability, and we said no.
I agree with you.
So I guess we have them almost by default.
Very well.
But they've done a good job for us, and that's why, when we issued the RFP out, we were able to retain them with the restrictions that the audit committee put in place, that we did rotate a partner and then rotate the onsite manager, which is the one that really controls all the testing that's done, so...
Great. I think we're on the same page. Anyone else? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2012-71.
Municipal order accepting a donation from the Bowling Green Warren County Regional Airport of a 1990 GMC Sierra Aircraft Rescue firefighting vehicle.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Hill, Mr. DeFabo.
We received an offer, as Kate said, from the regional airport to accept a used aircraft rescue firefighting vehicle. Greg Johnson's here on your behalf to take ownership of that vehicle, you're so moved. Greg, you want to make any comments, other than thank you, or?
I think it's a great idea. I think elaborate more if you want to.
That's the kind of guy I like right there. I do have to say, when I first started reading this, I thought we were buying something that we flew and put out fires with, so I was glad to know that it was a truck and not, when I kept reading aircraft, I kept getting confused. Yes.
Actually, helicopter was that?
Yeah. Well, we can go to peanuts for advice on that. Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading ordinance 2012, number 12.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 8.48 acres from HB Highway Business and LI Light Industrial to LI Light Industrial located on Dishman Lane, presently owned by Tommy Lloyd.
So moved. Second. Motion by Denning and second by Nash, Mr. DeFabo.
Mayor, ordinance 14, 15, and 16 are the same family of action involving rezonings. Steve Hunter is here to answer one or all the questions involving all three ordinance, and if you wanted to come up and ask him multiple questions on one or all, he's here.
Mr. Denning?
He can stay where he's at.
They won't be able to hear him, though. About home?
Okay, come on down, Steve. Just one quick question. What is the plans for this parcel?
Excuse me?
What are Mr. Lloyd's plans?
Yeah, the plans, a little bit vague in this zone change, but basically a trucking business of some kind, and possibly other light industrial uses in the future, possibly warehousing, but basically a trucking business. So the property was split-zone, it had a sliver of highway business already, so it's basically put the rest of the pavement down, put the trucks on the property, had to all be light industrial. But he built, he put into binding elements a cap of 94,000 square feet of building if down the road he wanted to put some warehousing or an industrial building.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. English, were you here to provide any additional information, or are you just here to watch us vote?
Next case.
Next case, all right. Uh-oh. All right, please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance 2012, number 13.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 5.03 acres from RM4 multifamily residential to PUD Planned Unit Development located at 1140 Kentucky Street, presently owned by Columns LLC.
So moved. Second. Motion by Nash and second by Denning. Mr. English, did you have something to add?
Yes.
This is the old junior high and high school concept.
That's what I was going to ask him, if that was the backside of the school and so on.
I think it's the whole project, isn't it?
The whole project.
Making it a planned unit development. Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Thank you for coming. Sorry I had to wait so long. First reading ordinance 2012, 14.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 0.19 acre from HB Highway Business to RM4 multifamily residential located at 1516 Kenton Street, presently owned by LR Property Management LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Hill. Any questions or discussion? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2012, number 72.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of a grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, Office of Justice Programs for the fiscal year 2012 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, funds in the amount of $34,423.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Waltrip, Mr. DeFabo.
About 80% of our patrol vehicles have digital in-car cameras, which is proving to be an effective technology. Every year, we receive money from the Byrne Program, who was an officer who was slain in the line of duty in New York City, and it's memorialized with this program. We're here tonight to accept, hopefully, $17,211, that grant of 34,423 is split equally with the county. Jennifer Nash is here, if you have any questions.
Comment your questions. Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Thank you for coming, Ms. Jen, appreciate it. Municipal Order 2012-73.
Municipal order accepting maintenance responsibility for sidewalks on Three Springs Road, Kentucky 884, located in the city, limits to be constructed by the Kentucky Transportation the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet as part of a road reconstruction project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill, Mr. DeFabo.
The highway department transportation cabinet is making a much-needed improvement to Three Springs Road. As part of this project, they are putting in approximately fifty, fifteen, fifty-seven-hundred linear feet of sidewalk on two different sides inside the city limits pursuant to our negotiated protocol, how to deal with sidewalks in the future. We'll take over ongoing maintenance of this sidewalk when they're completed. It's a good project, needed. Sidewalks would be a great help, and we are willing to take over maintenance of those on this road.
Any discussion? Yes. Yes, Mr. Nash? Is this part of a larger road proj? Right. This is part of a much larger project than just sidewalks.
Oh, yeah. This is five lane.
Our agreement to take in the sidewalks. Wanted to make sure.
It'll be five lane to just past Flealand.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
It'll be a big deal. It'd be great.
Yeah, it'd be great. Any other discussion? Please call her on.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2012, number seventy-four?
Municipal order approving construction and accepting maintenance of various streets in Brentwood Place Section One subdivision. So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Nash, Mr. DeFabo.
Ongoing protocol, developers build new subdivisions and bring streets into our domain. They have to meet certain requirements, including drainage. We put them through the rigors of our, our protocol and our, our requirements, and then they, once they complete that, they ask to be accepted into the city. Jeff and his staff have taken a look at this and are recommending that we accept maintenance of Brentwood Place Section One subdivision. Jeff and Melissa are here. Give any questions?
Any discussion? I have a quick question. I know we're doing stormwater program at Windover Apartments out there, the apartments on Windover. This has no relation, any problem with flooding it?
We, this area of town, we do have a high groundwater table in, in the Windover basins. We do have water coming, coming up. They are working for us on a solution for that. This has a little bit of a high groundwater table. It's, it's a little bit higher in elevation than Windover. In some storms, we've, we've had this basin full, but it does meet the requirements for the retention basin sizing set forth in the subdivision regulations.
Thank you. Anything else? Please call her on.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2012, number seventy-five?
Municipal order approving a professional services agreement with Brian Holland related to an exclusive right to sell contract for property located at one-zero-one State Street and four-twenty-five First Avenue East.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Denning and second by Hill, Mr. DeFabo.
I'll defer to you if you'd like, but basically, this is an agreement to allow Mr. Holland to sell property on one-on-one State Street and four-twenty-five First Avenue. We tried that ourselves, to try to sell that awkward piece of land there, and Mr. Holland is asking to sell it on our behalf and be paid for that service. I believe he has some potential buyers who'd be interested. Would you like to add anything to that?
Now, just that he had, we didn't pick Mr. Holland out of a crowd. He came to us with a buyer that fell through because of an unrelated issue that he thought he had interest in doing it elsewhere and wanted to make that reservation for us. Anyone else? Please call her on.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2012-76?
Municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed for the city, from the city of Bowling Green to General Motors LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill, Mr. DeFabo.
The city issued industrial revenue bond to help support the development of the Corvette plant. That IRB, as it's known, has been paid off. We're here tonight, and you all are co-sponsors to basically allow a mayor to sign a quitclaim deed to give the property to GM and, as they, as they would say, a good trade. So we have a beautiful plant, and we, we did our part in helping a business here in Bowling Green. I remember before I moved to Bowling Green, sitting in a dentist's chair, and my dentist was more interested in the fact that I was coming to a Corvette city than working on my tooth. That's how important Corvettes are around the world, and we should be proud that they're made here.
Any discussion? They have to pay us a dollar, is that correct?
Two dollar or ten dollars, but I don't think we'll have to come back, because I think I got generic wording, but I got a, an email this afternoon reminding me to maybe some personal property that's in our name, too, that, which we may need to do a bill sale for some personal property as well. But also reminded them, if I'm not mistaken, there was a second IRB issued a few years ago for the expansion, so some of that stuff may not be ready to go yet, so they may have to hold on to that one. But, so we may, I'll have to debate when we get that listing of the, of the stuff. Because I added a generic thing here. I think it says, including the closeout of the industrial development of revenue bond issues. That may be good enough to catch us up. Because they've got, just like some stuff we did tonight, they've got a lot of stuff they've got to do to close this out with the trustee.
That last deal, I think, was with their new paint shop that we gave them some help from.
Couldn't remember if it was that one or the Cadillac?
That's when they were going, started making the Cadillac, the sporty Cadillac, eighty-five thousand dollar car here.
I told plant manager Dave Tappman I was coming to collect the dollar, so.
Collect the dollar, yeah. We'll find it somewhere.
Please call her on.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Do we need a motion to remove this from the table, or because it was?
Yes.
So moved.